Okay, thank you. We're going to go right into our open session. We just finished our budget hearing. So, first order of business, I need a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
[inaudible]
All in favor? Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda items?
[inaudible]
All in favor? Thank you. Communications.
No board communication at this moment.
Thank you. And we have no public...
No, no requests.
No requests. Next is our finance report. Thank you.
Hello again. The Finance Department will be wrapping up the end of fiscal year projects and preparing for the ASBR submission that is due in August. The end of fiscal year projects include processing the June, July, and August payrolls, processing any and all stipend payrolls, including career ladder, finalizing purchase orders, invoicing so that as many bills for this current year are invoiced and paid by June 30th, and grant reimbursement payment requests such as Title, Special Education, and other grants. We are also continuing the preparations for the FY '25 audit that is scheduled to be conducted on August 26th and 27th. Audit confirmations have been completed and sent to the auditors for distribution prior to June 30th. Board members and district vendors should expect to receive their letter in the next couple of weeks. That's it.
Next, under Reports, we have our Instruction Report.
Hello. So, a lot of the instruction details I have will be presented on most of my agenda items, but I do have a few additional updates. So, last Monday, on June 2nd, we had our district continuous improvement facilitators come to discuss with building administrators the staff survey that was sent out to them in March. And then, in addition, yesterday, we had our last instructional leadership module with our facilitator. We had a lot of great conversation and planning was set and done to begin DCI work in the fall with the district as a whole. Tomorrow, building administrators have their annual ME recertification training. So, each year, building principals go through a recertification to be able to evaluate our teachers. We will go through the training as a group, and then, after the training is complete, we will plan goals and priorities for the upcoming year. On Thursday, we are hosting a Lunch and Learn for our new to the district staff. So, we will be presenting to the staff. We will be meeting at Upper Elementary, have a presentation on who we are as Odessa, what do we have to offer, and kind of get them excited that they joined the right team here in Odessa. May 27th and 28th, and then, upcoming, June 16th and 17th, we had and are having a curriculum camp for kindergarten through eighth grade teachers. So, this is led by our instructional coaches where they're guiding teachers to dive into the state standards, select priority standards that will be taught for this upcoming school year, align them to units, align them to the units that they will be teaching for the year. And then, at the end of the month, we are taking Summit Team teachers to a DSE literacy summit. So, this is down at Lake of the Ozarks. It is a two-day conference where teachers will learn more about the science of reading, various teaching strategies, best practices, and kind of their overall theme is how every teacher is a literacy teacher. So, we've got teachers from every building being represented whenever we go down there. So, it was an awesome opportunity last year, so we had more people interested this year. So, I'm super excited to find with them.
All right. Thank you.
Scott.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next up is our Maintenance Report.
So, they've got a lot going on around the district. Custodians are off and off and running with classroom cleaning and waxing. Just hit on a few highlights. Additional security cameras being added out of the athletic complex. That started today with the lift rental, and then, they will continue with exterior lighting this week as well. While we've got that lift, they're going to go around and hit that pretty hard. Later in the summer, looking to seal brick in a couple of areas around the district, as well as touch-up painting up around different places. OUE will be getting interior paint and some gym padding and clear it up for us as well. And then, McQuarrie, a big item there is PTO purchase and playground equipment that our main staff will be installing once summer school is over. A lot going on.
What's going on with your sidewalk and central office?
Huh. Well, that's coming later.
Oh, sorry.
That's part of, that's part of the replacement that we're having.
Oh, I wasn't, I didn't know that was new from last year.
Yep. Those two sections were new last year.
Okay.
New again this year, hopefully for the last time.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have our Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, I've got a few things. This time of year is pretty busy with legislation, so a lot of what I've got is that. Some things that are sitting on the governor's desk that, that will impact what we're doing. Senate Bill 63, where homeschool students may participate in extracurricular activities in a school district in which they reside. They have to live within the boundaries. The bill is on the governor's desk, and if it's signed by the governor, it would go into effect as of August 28th, 2025. Senate Bill 68 is a education omnibus bill, has several things in there that relate to education. One of the biggest things that got written into this was the electronic devices in schools. Electronic devices are defined as a portable device that is used to initiate, receive, store, or view communication, information, images, or data electronically. These will be prohibited from the start of the day to the end of the day. This includes passing time, meal, passing times and mealtimes. And again, if the governor were to sign this, which we anticipate that he will, it would go into effect on August 28th. We have included that language in the handbooks, and I'll reference that when we get to that, that agenda item. House Bill 567 relates to the minimum wage. This bill increases minimum wage to $13.75 until December 31st of this year. Then, it increases to $15. We only have a couple of salary schedules that start below the $15, so Kat and I will be working, we'll get those in front of the board to get those up to or above $15 probably next month, hopefully. But it's, we'll get those in front of you. So, we have everything that is above that $15. Senate Bill 3, this is the special legislation that's going on right now, has several different components, three main components. The one that relates to schools at this point impacts the, the taxing liability. So, they've got different levels. Right now, Lafayette County would be a 5% county, meaning the tax liability would be limited to 5% or CPI annually. Johnson County would be limited to 0%. In other words, their taxes would not increase. The taxing liability would be limited to the rate of 2024. So, the assessed valuation would, would only, would continue to increase, but the tax liability that someone would pay would be limited to, in Lafayette County, 5% growth maximum above what 2024 was. Okay? In Johnson County, that would be limited to a maximum of what 2024 was because they were a 0% county. Again, this is currently going on as a part of that special session.
So, you say in Johnson County, they wouldn't be able to increase at all since they're 0%?
Correct. And there's several counties. There's, there's three classifications. There's a 0%, a 5%, and then, counties that are not affected. That is based upon the discretion of the senators.
And I'm assuming they're using county data to determine if they feel like they can raise that. There's probably a multitude of factors that come into play for each individual.
I have not been privy to the information as to how a county was, how our representative, Representative Gregory, how he determined. I will say, based on the information that I have seen, I think he's got six counties. I believe that's correct. Five of the counties are a 5%, one of the county is 0. So, I don't know what that... Or no, one of the, the other county is not, not impacted.
Okay.
So, it could grow at whatever the assessment is. So, the other quick thing, I just want to touch on summer school. Summer school is going well. About, our enrollment's about the same, with the exception of the high school. We're starting to really see a flip. Over the last few years, we, our total number of high school students has not really changed. What the flip has been is ceded to virtual. So, we're starting to see, so we're going to have some discussion, Man and I are going to have some discussion about, you know, what do we do? Do we start to offer our own virtual platform in that setting? So, that's always a possibility. If we're, if that's how the students are wanting that summer school delivered, then let's look at doing it ourselves. So, we'll start to have those conversations and see what comes before, before next summer. And then, just a reminder that the board meeting, the regular board meeting next month is on Tuesday the 15th. It's the third Tuesday, it's the second. Question?
I've got something that I'd like to discuss since you brought up assessments.
Yes.
So, I actually got my assessment, I mean, several people in the county have gotten it, and I, I saw some wording on here that I just wanted to discuss and let you guys know. I don't know if you've read yours or if you've even gotten them. I know, I own a few pieces of property within Lafayette County, and I've had some pretty drastic increases, so I'm anticipating that others will as well. And when I say, I'm just talking in reference to percentages, I don't know exactly how it would work out. Finance-wise, as far as the dollar amount that I, but I know the percentages have went up quite a bit. The wording says, "The assessor determines the value only. The taxing entities determine the tax rates. If you feel that your taxes are too high, then you should involve yourself in the budget process of the taxing entities listed above and make your voice heard at their budget meetings." I think, not I think, I know that's like a terribly wrong statement. So, my concern is that, you know, people within the community may come to the school board and say, you know, like, "My taxes are high. You're the reason my taxes are high. You're the reason that our rates are going up." And I think that couldn't be farther from the truth. So, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on this, but...
I will say that I have not heard from anyone yet. I, I obviously received a similar bill with the same language. You know, and if, if the people in Lafayette County, specifically in our district, you know, when you look at your tax bill from 2024 to 2025, the amount on there is going to be more in '25 than it was in '24. It is more, the increase is a result of the assessed valuation going up from the county assessor. It's not a result of the school tax. The school tax is the same that it has been for several years. So, the increase that, that we're all going to pay is an increase in the assessed valuation, not an increase in school taxes.
And...
Or other entities.
My other question on top of this too, just because I want to know for my own interest is, did, has anyone from the county, specifically the assessor, contacted you and talked about how these rates go up and discussed that with you? I mean, obviously, I think that everyone is aware that we need a new elementary school, and the school has put together this committee of stakeholders that aren't necessarily school board members to determine what we're going to do about our elementary school. There's potential, obviously, that we're going to be asking for this levy, like, we're going to have to in order to make this school happen. These are some pretty important things that I feel like the assessor should be talking to us as a district, even though it's going to be you or someone else. Like, hey, we're, we're planning on raising these rates, just so you know, this is what's happening. Even if he has some mitigating circumstances, like I've heard some people say that this, the state is on, on the county assessor here in Lafayette County to raise them because we're so low. We've been historically low for a long time. But, any kind of feedback to...
I've heard that exact same thing, but I've not had any communication from our assessor.
Yeah.
But I've heard the same thing that you heard.
Yeah. I would be curious to know too, if he's had conversations with any other, like, the fire department or anybody else at this directly or...
Not that I'm aware of.
You know, it's too bad that we at fault can't work together. It's like we're chasing our tail here. You know, we just talked about, we're trying to get our budget ready for next year, and we really don't know how much money we're really going to get from the state. But yet, on the other end of it, they're saying it's our fault about how much money our community's paying for our children to get educated. Our budgets due, I mean legally, we have to have our budget due in a month.
Well, G30.
So, they dropped this on us, and they give us, what, 45 days to try to figure it out, when they could have had a year. Can't tell me that he didn't know that he was doing this five months ago.
Have the sequence, yeah.
It's just horrible. It's just horrible. There's a lot of things I'd like to say right now, but I probably shouldn't.
It is, it's going to be hard to win over our voters to have a tax increase after they're already going to pay the tax increase in November when they get their tax bill.
Yep.
Hundred percent.
And you said it can be more than 5%?
And that with this new law that has...
And as the new law is written, as I understand it, that has to be a vote of the people that they will vote to restrict that, which I would say more people than not would vote to restrict that. That would have to take place either, do we have a November election this year? I don't remember. It would have to take place in August, which I would be shocked if it did, because that's just around the corner. But I, I believe it has to be done by the April election. So, it's possible, to your point, our measure and that measure could be on the same level. So, but I don't, I don't, I, I don't think that that's something that should derail what, what we're trying to do for kids, because ultimately, our focus is on how can we improve the education for the students and the residents.
And when you say "our" and "we," I think everyone here realizes, but maybe not the community, like, that's the community essentially is. It's not like, oh, the school board says that we need this new elementary school. Anybody can walk into that school and probably determine, like, this is bad, like, this is not, this is not a no case situation. I can guarantee you that every staff member that's in that building knows that we need a new building. So, we just have to, you know, make sure that we do a good job of getting that information out and trying to deal with some of these other things that are making it difficult.
Okay. Next up, we have our discussion items. District Facility Improvement Update.
Okay, so just provide you a quick update with bigger projects that are going on, and I'll just go through up here. There's, I've just got quite a few pictures of each thing, and got a lot of good progress going on. So, softball, softball and baseball field, parking lot, the gym, track resurfacing is not underway yet, scheduled for coming up. And then, the sidewalks that we've been talking about for a while with the replacement in the bad sidewalks, that has, has happened, and there, those two pieces are all they have left actually, the floor over by our office. They've, they've come in, and they've done a really good job, and they've been very responsive to what we needed, so. Just seeing that one, but I won't take a lot of time. I'll try to just go through. Should have put music on, I guess.
You can sing if you want to.
Yeah, you would want, you would want me to go faster.
Could we, could we do a facility walk-through?
Yeah.
Probably would be better, wouldn't it?
Oh yeah, sorry, this, this really is music, but Logan was able to get a time-lapse camera set up in there, so.
Oh, that's cool.
This is actually done, except for two more coso acts next week, so we'll see. It's about a minute long.
This was way faster on the video than in real life.
But really, this one minute is three days.
Yeah.
But, you know, they did all this in three days, and really, more like two and a half, probably. What's the life of a refinishing? Ten years?
I think that's what they said.
Yeah, ten to 12 years. As much use as that floor gets, it should be done in 10 years. I think we figured out the last one was 17. Yeah, it'd gone a little long.
And this should, this is all water-based now. It was oil-based finish, which is the yellowing, so we shouldn't get that even in that 10 years, and so it should stay.
That is so cool how they do that in the process.
Will we ever have to replace the actual wood on that floor?
They did, I think they were planning on replacing some spots that were like dead or bad. I know that the basketball team had just...
That's good.
They didn't replace some.
I, I do think...
We didn't replace any. We did have the floor looked at by the insurance company, and they had no issues with our floor.
Yeah. Well, I think there was just a few dead spots, and that, and that was in their bid to fix it if they found any, but I think the wood will last off, can be refinished upon checking.
Yeah, you can, unless you have some damage or something.
Yeah.
I've never ever had to replace one unless it happened. I think two that I've experienced damage on that had to be replaced, other than that.
And you can just replace the little, the, the boards that you fix? You don't have to...
You can. I had one that was a full replacement, and one that was termite damage on one side, so they were able to replace about maybe a fourth of the floor.
Okay.
It does look so good.
Does look great.
Looks great.
Credit to you all on this too, that was, and it sounds like it was a jeopardy at a certain point. You missed the finish line.
They had to replace about 80% of it.
And then, the other, the last piece on the upgrade, or the update, so traffic study, this is on the new elementary. Traffic study will take place in the fall, and they'll look at all the different roads leading into the site at Upper. And then, had a committee meeting recently on that, and got some good ideas on how to get the information out, starting, starting this fall, and IDS will, will be a part of that too as well, with the agreement that you have in the packet to get some rendering and possible things. So...
That's it? Okay. You have any questions for Roger?
When they have those, the meetings of, of that committee that's been put together, is it set up, like, where they, they're putting those out publicly to where, say, someone had some ideas or was just curious about, you know, what was taking place or what was going on, that they could attend a public portion of those?
They're posted.
Oh, they are? Okay.
They have had, like, maybe, we don't have, we had maybe one person, but we have it, but yeah.
Because I have, I have some thoughts about potentially some of those things, and I'm just curious, I, I can't go to a meeting, I don't think, because there maybe is a one or two board members on there, because at that point, we'd have a forum.
There's two.
But maybe I could send an email with just some of my thoughts.
Absolutely.
If we had, I don't know, if we have a...
And it would be inappropriate for you to show up, it still would be a forum.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. But I'm, I'm just saying publicly, you know, if anybody within the community could have those, very nice.
Next, we have the 2025-26 Back-to-School Schedule.
Yes. In your packet, you've got a copy of our staff back-to-school schedule, so this will be sent out to staff before their return in August. Very similar to years past. The only difference is that we took the Building Bulldogs Conference, that's typically held on one of our August back-to-school PD days, and with feedback from the staff, we are going to push that either to our September or, or our October Professional Development Day to give more time in the building and in classrooms for building and building professional development and time to prepare for the first day, couple of weeks of school, so that when we do the Building Bulldog Conference, staff are able to listen to the sessions that they choose to attend. They can get more out of it. They don't have a million other things going through their mind at the very beginning of the year. So, took that feedback, and that's essentially the only change for our August back-to-school schedule.
Any questions? Okay. Next, we have the district surveys.
Yes. So, in your packets, I provided a, a brief overview of our district survey that was provided to us from DSE. And I took kind of just some strengths in there. We got a comparison of Odessa, our seventh school district, to, compared to the state, and then also found strengths and weaknesses, just kind of within, as a district as a whole, and then within the buildings.
Well, it was all good in theory.
It really was going to work. So, what's in your packet is a...
A for effort on our...
This interactive report that was really cool. So, they sent us a PDF of all of our results, and then also this interactive report that you, we can manipulate to choose whether it's our district, whether we look at buildings all together. Our younger students, grades three through five, completed the survey. Older students, six through 12, completed it. Our families, parents, and then staff. So, can you click on the fourth tab, Response Demographics?
I can. I was going to try something else, but it worked so great.
We'll go with that.
Step, look up your face. Don't wait, come on. Help him out.
It worked eight hours ago.
Did you have it in that presentation mode? Is that what that one was?
Yeah, but that's what that is, but it doesn't, anyway. You won't get the idea, but you'll get the kind of the idea.
So, the Response Demographics, it tells us how many and who filled out our survey, which I think is a very important piece of information. So, we had in total our older students, so these are sixth grade through 12th graders. We had 628 respond, which I thought was awesome. Our younger student, 371, so those are our third through fifth graders. And then, parents, we had a total of 374, and I really like it, breaks it down into the grade level of the parent, and parents could select if they have more than one student in the district. And then, our staff, we did have, something we took away from this, we did have two surveys going out at once. So, our staff, we did only have 110 staffs answer the questions on this. So, it was important for us to take all of that into consideration as we were interpreting these results. So, if you can click on the first tab, I just wanted to go over some strengths that really stood out going through this, and then some challenges and things that the buildings are going to, going to have a focus on for this next school year. So, again, I can click on District and then the Buildings. So, the District, our strengths, we scored really high in parent and family partnerships and emergency readiness. So, District as a whole, community, staff, students feel like we have good partnerships and that we are ready for emergencies. We have procedures set in place. And then, a challenge was the physical and emotional well-being, and it's, it's going to be hard. You can scroll down. So, it's on a four-point scale, so I essentially took what stood out to me. If across the board, it was lower than three, is where I kind of started. So then, if you click on McQuarrie, it changes, and these are just the results from McQuarrie. They didn't have any students, so on here, it was just the parent and the staff. So, McQuarrie's strengths, they scored really high in positive mindset and relationships. And then, one of their challenges was support and resources. You can just go down the line if you want to. High school. So, high school, their strength was from, I thought this was really cool. So, from the students, they scored very well in connectedness and engagement. So, they felt connected to their staff members and just they're engaged in their learning. So, I thought that was super important to highlight, that the high schoolers scored that well. And then, emergency readiness was also a strength. And then, a challenge was learning expectations and reinforcement, which the building administrators do have a plan in that for next year. Then, middle school, I think, is next. Their strengths were positive mindset and emergency readiness. And then, one of their challenges was the physical and emotional well-being, and this was from the students where they scored that. So, I do know that they have opportunities coming up on how to get some more character education into their advisory classes. And then, last one, Upper Elementary. Their strengths were partnerships and a positive mindset. While their challenge, the students said that peer relationships and respecting differences was a challenge for them. So, again, they do have a new counselor coming in, so communicating that, hey, here's what our students said, what can we do to, you know, alleviate that feeling that they're having? So, again, really good data. And then, the last thing I'll show you... So again, really good data, and then the last thing I'll show you on here, if you go to the third tab, if I see one of the strengths or the challenges on here, it tells me every question that was asked. And, um, how they responded, how we scored on individual questions, and so that's how it kind of got the average of the overall domain. So whenever we're, we're looking at, um, peer relationships, I can go in and see what students scored on like five questions, and it differs between the domains. So, um, again, super important valuable information, and this is really gonna help drive, um, a focus for this upcoming school year.
I noticed all the buildings were dissatisfied with resources, cleanliness, building maintenance.
Yes, that was, there, there were some, some consistencies across the building, which I thought was really, um, interesting. So. Resources, which I'll get to here in a couple of action items.
Yeah.
Um, and then cleanliness, on there, it was literally, some of them, I think the questions on there were. Kind of the upkeep of buildings, things that, I mean, we can work on, for sure, it's nothing that is out of our hands, I think we can just do a better focus on.
Seems like a really tangible action item.
Yes, absolutely.
Improving, you know, the scores or whatever.
Yeah, and I think that's a good word, a good way, good place to start is what can we fix now, and then what's kind of our long-term plan?
Right.
So, which is, again, the value of this, um, survey.
I thought of that too, as we talked about, you know, hopefully a new building in the near future, that feels like one we need to kind of have some structure in the process, and procedural maybe for the term.
I was gonna ask about parent partnerships, like what specifically, as far as, I mean, all, all three groups probably scared to score this low, I'm guessing, right? Or, or was it really?
Yeah.
And I'm just curious about the questions, like what, it's just kind of a broad, like what, what's going, what's going on with a parent partnership?
Right.
People feel like it's a challenge, and it's, it's not good.
On the third tab.
Is it the teachers, like, well, the parents aren't responding, when we try to send something out, or is it the parents saying, oh, the teacher's not responding, and we send something?
Can you click on the parents? Over.
I'm just curious about how you go about.
Sorry, can you not see? Come on.
How do you go about proving that portion of something?
So again, this is what's really valuable, because you can see the individual questions that was asked about that, and then the average of how that was scored, um, parent partnerships, so it's under.
I know, not that maybe we had many calls with Cooper, but I always felt like teachers were really attentive whenever I sent stuff, and then if there was something going on, I felt like the teachers did a really good job of keeping, keeping me glued in.
Yes.
Let us know.
So I received communication about school system's progress towards meeting goals, um, I received info about educational services available, I'm comfortable talking to teachers at this school. Uh, which that scored actually very high, I feel welcome at this school. So, and it lumps them kind of all together.
Can, can you email that to us?
If you've got, yeah.
I'm just curious.
It's a, it's a.
Oh, is it?
Tab.
I would say if you, if you have the software.
No, I don't.
But, but.
It's not that.
I believe I have it in the PDF form too, so I can definitely share that.
Yeah, we can share it, what was it, ninety-nine pages?
Yeah, it's ninety-nine pages, so this was a lot easier, easier to digest.
Yeah, but we can share that.
Yeah, for sure.
Can you submit your, um, goals that are established as, as a result of these?
So that, we're kind of, kind of, we've got our overall goals, and so when we get, meet back in August with principals, is when we're gonna kind of share what all of our goals are, so we will come back with those.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And this survey was provided by Desi.
Desi, yes.
I know sometimes some of the things that we get aren't a super good fit, how did you feel about this? You feel like it was a good one, or?
I, yes, at first I was like, oh my goodness, this is so much information, it's overwhelming, but once I started getting into it, kind of going through the weeds, I was like, okay, this is all making sense. It's kind of, it, it's gonna allow us to just dive right into the root and build from there.
Similar to like what we do with iReady with that data.
Exactly.
This is what's going on.
Yes, exactly.
I think it gives us a point to start working, but I think next year's survey will be more to compare from this year to next year. I think we'll get more out of next year's survey.
Absolutely. Yes, and we've learned, like I said, we had, um, a couple of different surveys going on at the same time, so we got feedback from staff, like, that was a lot, I couldn't remember if I filled this one out, did I do this one? So we will be more intentional about when we share it out, how we share it out, making sure the communication is a little more detailed.
And I think too, if we are intentional with this, like you talk about, and, and you're gonna have these meetings with admin, and, and, and they're gonna work to try to, you know, fix some of these things. It sounds like it was bad, it was all bad, so I don't want, I don't wanna portray that, but there are a few things, obviously we wanna work on the things that are good. Then that might go a long way into these teachers getting motivated to say, yeah, I'm gonna fill it out next time.
Absolutely.
And we want them to feel heard, because we do value their opinions and, um, you know, do they feel welcome and heard in order to share?
And that's why we want valid answers, like it is completely anonymous, but we want the honest answer, so we know what they need.
Yeah, I just don't wanna write off some feedback, because it's like, oh, that question wasn't written correctly, you know, it's like, we need to value all of this input.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
For sure.
Good stuff.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, next, we have iReady diagnostic.
All right, me again. Um, I've asked our instructional coach Jenny Oxer to come up here and add any input, it doesn't matter.
I'm ready to stand up.
Uh, so in May, we completed our final iReady diagnostic, so presented, um, some information. This is gonna be a comparison from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So one thing that, uh, we really wanna highlight is the difference between typical growth and stretch growth. So typical growth is what you would expect any student to sit into the classroom, if I'm a third grade student, my typical growth is I'm gonna be ready for fourth grade. I'm, I'm where I need to be. Your stretch growth is where our, where we're really closing the gap, so if a student meets stretch, meets their stretch growth, they scored below grade level, beginning of the year, third grade. Their stretch growth is an ambitious goal up here, to where if I meet this stretch growth, I'm getting back on grade level. So it's the above and beyond, than just that tier one classroom direct instruction. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So our goal last year, and a lot of this year, was we wanna see typical growth, we want to see our reds and our yellows go to green. Our stretch growth now, kind of our focus will be for next year is, we want all of our kids to hit that stretch growth, because we are closing those gaps, we are doing above and beyond, more than they need. So, um, this is broken down by grade level, typical growth in reading and math, so hundred percent means they met it. So the ones in green, those grade levels in those subject areas, they met that typical growth, those kids were in the classrooms, they learned their grade level material. The last two columns is the stretch growth, so our first grade and third grade reading, those grade levels closed the gap. So what they did is kind of our focus for next year, we had, we had first graders and third graders, beginning of the year, score below those grade levels, they finished the year above and beyond. That's what we wanna see, that's how we're gonna get all of our kids reading and performing back on grade level, so just wanted to highlight that. So this is our district as a whole, so again, the bottom is going to be our beginning of the year, the top is the most recent end of the year, huge growth. Um, we really wanna see the green hash at the end of the year, because that means they are ready to move on to the next grade level. Green is still great, they met their typical growth, they're on grade level, the hash green is, they're ready to move on though. So those greens and the yellows, we're gonna need to do a little bit of review with them at the beginning of the year, um, in case there was any regression that occurred over summer. But again, the goal at the end of the year is we wanna see them, um, in the hash, so. Top is kindergarten through tenth grade ELA, bottom is math, so our green is growing, so that's the goal. Go to the next one. So then I broke it up into buildings and then grade levels, so McQuary Elementary, this is kindergarten, first and second grade. They've got one percent in red, which is huge, their yellow diminished, their green is, I mean, fifty percent of the building is ready to move on, but the twenty-three percent, like, we're, we're in pretty good shape here. And then, again, grade levels. Those reds and yellows are going away, which is what we like to see. Stop me if you have any questions, cause I'll kind of just highlight, it's, it's all good stuff, so I could talk about this for days. Uh, this is math at, at McQuary. So a little lower than reading, but we're getting there. So then upper elementary, third, fourth, and fifth grade ELA. So they saw a lot of growth here. So again, third grade rocked it out of the park there, their red has almost diminished, which is a huge accomplishment for them. And then math. So huge growth, the green did fabulous there. And then our grade levels. So third grade again. Left, left with a lot of green.
I'm sorry if I'm missing this, you've got your beginning of the year, benchmark, end year final, but how many data points are there?
So we do three, so we do, we do, we give the iReady assessment, beginning, middle, and end. Um, and then students get on and do like a MyPath, so it's based on the instruction, it places them at a certain level, and so they get individualized learning on the platform. In addition to small groups in the classroom, if they do any pull-out math or Title One reading, uh, interventions, um, so it gives us, we do this assessment three times.
And the data, the cool part is the data can be like class-wide, it can be just that individual teacher's classroom, it can be down to the kid, so you can have twenty kids, and you're like, okay, these kids are all in this spot, so they're in this, these kids are here. Super cool stuff, sorry, I geeked out on it.
I do too. We sit and just look at it for hours.
And we do have, I mean, we're not diving into the teachers, but I mean, there are a handful of teachers, but like, I get to sit down one-on-one and go through their data with them. And I talk about converting, like you wanna convert, we wanna convert our stripey red at least to yellow, that's the goal, so that would be two levels of, like, each color is kind of a level of growth. And so we want to get them two levels up, and so I did have some teachers that started the year, one of our new hires even had lot, like half of her class was in the red. And she ended the year with half of her class in stripey green, and another fourth in the green, I'm like, this is like, let's celebrate, I mean, this is like big deal. And especially like when you're in their day-to-day, I'm currently teaching the pre-K summer school, so I'm remembering just the, the day-to-day of the classroom, and it's like, oh my goodness, like, am I doing anything right? And then you get to the end and get to see this, and it's like, oh wow, like, the kids grew, and like even more so, like, when we're looking at ELA and math, I mean, reading is the foundation of everything, and their math skills are the foundation of critical thinking, and so it's just an amazing thing to think through. We had a few kids that, like, they came in stripe, like stripey red, and they got, had, they had, I saw a few three hundred, four hundred, five hundred percent growth for a child, and like, that's just unheard of and amazing. And so sometimes this view is almost too big, because it's like, oh my goodness, look at all the things, it's like when you zoom in and think, like, of each child in the room, we are seeing a lot of growth. And I don't think I had any teacher have more than three or four kids with a, what I would call bad growth, like, for lack of a better word, so like, lots to celebrate. But when we look at each individual child, cause that's the other thing, it's like, a child going from a stripey red to a yellow, a lot to celebrate, but on this view, it kind of looks like, oh, look at all this yellow we still have. But that's still huge.
Middle school ELA. And then by grade levels. And then math. So quite a bit of growth here. And then here's our ELA, and this was taken in ELA one and two. And then all the math courses. So again, um, instructional coaches meet monthly, if not bi-weekly, with staff members to go over this data, and then also progress monitoring. So what are they doing in their classroom to help grow that individual student? So that's just, that's a part of their weekly, bi-weekly, monthly rotation.
Lots of discussion about data.
Yes.
Okay, I wanna go back to the surveys for a second. I think this shows how important we need to listen to those surveys, because we're asking growth of our teachers as much as we are our kids.
We have to make sure we.
Yeah, we, we need to make sure we're doing what we can do. Instead of just saying we want our test scores up and setting your items, we need to make sure we're following through.
And giving them tools like iReady.
What do the teachers think of iReady?
The resources that.
We've heard.
Yeah.
We've heard good feedback, um, some recent feedback is kind of, well, my kids just don't care, they don't, they don't care about it, it's just a test. So something we worked on for this last assessment was, okay, what incentives can we put in place for them, um, to try their best? So one, we can get accurate data, but two, so they do try their best, so we can see the representation of how they truly are performing. Um, sometimes you can see kind of a, uh, do I want to use like a, they've been on a device too much? So something we've talked about with building principals was, um, iReady came out with like a recommendation of usage, so we are gonna scale that back just a little bit, burnout, that's the word. Um, so they don't have that burnout, so that they're not on it every day for thirty minutes, cause that can be a lot for a child. Um, so let's try, you know, ten minutes every day, or every other day, or, so we're gonna get a little, um, creative with some new ideas this year.
Along, to piggyback on what Brian said too, with teachers, I know whenever I first got on the school board with iReady and all these things that we were implementing, um, the, the general consensus I felt like was, um, the teachers just mentally weren't in a good spot, they had a lot of pressure with all the things that were going on. Seeing this and then hearing, this is Ox, Ox, Oxer?
Oxer, Ox like the animal.
Talk about these individual students, and seeing that, that makes my heart happy, you know?
Yeah.
I, I can't thank the teachers enough for all the work that they're putting in to, to make this happen, I know. Uh, I would maybe compare it to, like, a carpenter, Brian can probably relate to this, when you get this big monster house down, done that you framed, and you can pull away from the job, and you look at it, and you're like, oh, it looks so good, you know? This gives us the ability for the teacher to look at that, that kid that you talked about, that's increased two hundred or three hundred percent, they're like, this is awesome. I mean, they know that kid got more intelligent, you know, and learned some stuff, but when they see it here, and then they see the percentages, that's just like.
Nice to see the statistics backing up what we're here.
Yeah, that's a super cool.
And I can tell you, I've had dozens of teachers this year come into my office after, like, you know, cause I don't see this horse immediately, they are like, looking at them, and they're like, go check, go check.
Oh, they're running.
They love to celebrate.
Celebrating and stuff, so, and I will say like from myself, when I was in the classroom, it's just nice to have something where I'm like, okay, this number does tell me that I'm doing a good job, and not that like, you know, our parents celebrate us, and the kids are celebrating us, but like, it is nice to have a tangible, cause at the end of the day, like, yes, I want my students to feel loved, I want them to know that they're cared for, but I also need them to be readers. And so it's nice to have like a tangible piece that's like, they are able to do that. And so, and that's where the My, My, MyPath, it's important to understand, iReady is kind of like a three-legged stool, they have the diagnostic, which is three times a year, it's like a test they're taking, like an ACT, but at their level. And then there's the MyPath, which is like the preparatory lessons, that is, supposedly can be kind of AI-generated and taking the kids through, that is the piece that we're seeing, it's like, ooh, iReady probably sold it at this level, and we're seeing the effectiveness is not what iReady does good sales. But then there's a curriculum piece, and we're hoping that once we bring that piece in, it kind of connects it all, so it's even more tangible.
I appreciate you coming tonight, it really kind of personalized all the data, cause we, I mean, we see it three times a year, but it reminds us that like, these are our kids, you know, it's not just numbers.
Exactly.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and thank you for all you do for our kids, I hear nothing but good things, and you're an absolute technician, and I can tell you, you're like, you're geeking out on this stuff like I do a little bit, so.
Like I said, being in the classroom, it then is humbling, humbling me a little bit, because, yeah, I got told I hate you, and you're so pretty today, but same child.
But you can tell that you're real familiar with it, and I know that people have said that you've helped, you know, them along the way of kind of interpreting this and, and putting it in, in its place, and. Like I think that you do for our kids and our teachers, and helping out, it was very appreciative.
Thank you, like the, I mean, the positive, like honestly, coming into Odessa is interesting, cause there is like a very positive, like, I'm very excited to see where we can be in a year to three years with just like targeted ideas, because I think that the teachers want to come together, but like you said, they're like, oh, this feels overwhelming, and it's like, you know, I always view myself, I'm like the personal trainer for the teachers, like, we can do this, just show up, if you show up, we, I'll get you there. Um, and so I think that's been nice to be like, okay, I don't have to have the plan, like Jenny will take care of the plan, I just have to show up and love on the kids, so.
That's awesome, and super.
Well, I do, but it's for.
Thanks.
Next up, we have staff attendance incentive.
Yeah, I had previously spoken to the board about this, but with the generous donation from the, uh, Odessa School Foundation, we will provide an incentive for good attendance for all staff during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, or, or they'll be eligible. Uh, each quarter, all staff with no more than two total days absent will get their name, will have their name, uh, in a drawing for a two hundred and fifty dollar gift card. And then at the end of the year, all staff with no more than eight total absences will have their name in a drawing for a five hundred dollar gift card. So, again, I thank the foundation for, uh, supporting that initiative, and we'll see how they go.
Awesome.
Coles now.
Yeah.
Already got two, didn't he?
Oh, boy. Next up, we have action items. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six professional development handbook.
Yeah, this was, uh, presented for a first reading at the May meeting, uh, no changes have been made since that presentation, and if you have additional questions, Ms. Smith, be happy to answer.
If not, I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion. Did you make a motion? I'll make a motion. You want a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
We're just so used to talking.
I know.
I need to quiet.
Next up, we have our C SIP, our second reading of our C SIP.
Yeah, again, this was, uh, presented as a first reading at the May meeting, and no changes have been made since that presentation. Again, Ms. Smith is here, if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I need a motion.
A motion to approve the C SIP as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, we have our elementary math curriculum adoption.
The Amanda Show.
Say thank you for, thank you for joining the Amanda Show tonight. Did you get, someone get the reference, please say yes? Don't also watch out, it's a real show.
I don't watch the TV, but I'm gonna.
I mean, it's really old.
Oh.
Like when I was a child. It's not the clothes. Okay. Um, so this year, I kept you guys updated, we had, um, some math pilot resources going on. So for elementary, we are recommending the adoption of iReady Classroom Math for our math kindergarten through fifth grade resource. So teachers have spent the year piloting the resource with support, with support from our instructional coach, as well as, um, program representatives. So two teachers in each grade level piloted iReady, then they also have the option to look at Reveal Math. They met frequently with administrators, coaches, myself, we did surveys to get feedback, to determine the strengths and weaknesses in each program. Um, and then also looked at our iReady data. So iReady Classroom Math proved to be more rigorous than Reveal Math, which is what we're wanting, we want our kids to be on grade level. So the iReady Math, um, is discourse-driven, so it means the students are in there talking, talking about math, learning math hands-on. So there's options for the teacher not to just do, not the teacher just to stand up here and just, you know, go old-school style. There's interactive lessons, manipulatives, creative lessons, um, that they can use. And then just like Jenny had said, it really goes with, um, our iRe, our other iReady platforms that, that we use. So the vocabulary and the language is very common, so it's consistent across the board with, um, the reading that we had with our iReady Diagnostic. So we are, um, asking for the approval of the iReady Classroom Math for kindergarten through fifth grade, um, for our core resource.
And that's a five?
Five-year, yep, for five years, so that we can kind of track, it's gonna take, you know, our first year to really get in our teachers' hands, get them trained, learn how to teach, uh, and a little, again, it's a little bit different than the old-school traditional style. Um, so year two, we'll, we'll be diving in, so by year three, we'll really be able to see the fruits of the labor, um, of this implementation and track that year four and five.
I make the motion to approve the iReady Math.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the secondary math curriculum adoption.
Yes, so again, we piloted middle school, I should say, piloted two math resources, iReady Math and Reveal Math. Um, middle of the year, really, met, I met quite briefly or frequently with, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. Our students, it, iReady was not what was really fitting for our kids because of the way that the instruction was led. Our kids were not picking up on it, so we wanted to make sure we were meeting them where they were. So that's how we, um, kind of did some digging. High school uses Reveal as their kind of foundation, so that's how we found Reveal. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade implemented it in the spring. High school also dove into a little, dove into it a little bit more than what they were using. Um, it was purchased in twenty-twenty at the high school level, was not implemented with the fidelity that it should've been, so they did that this spring semester. So it is a balanced and a core curriculum, so the teacher can choose if they wanna teach it traditionally or that student-centered discourse method. So the flexible structure allows for each teacher to determine which method their kids are going to learn best with. So, um, we did receive a quote for a four-year contract. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's a brand-new Reveal, um, product, the high school courses, they've not come out with that, so that is why there's a difference between five and four. Um, but, so it includes online resources, student workbooks, manipulative kits, and then Alex Ac- Access, which is similar to the iReady MyPath, but for secondary students.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the secondary math curriculum adoption as presented.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the elementary reading curriculum adoption.
Yes, so this, um, resource is what was implemented this year. Last year, we signed a one-year contract with the hopes of something would come out that is, has not. So we are asking, um, to approve Ready Reading and Magnetic Reading for another one-year contract, because in the spring of twenty-twenty-six, iReady or Curriculum Associates is coming out with a all-encompassELA curriculum, so it will improve, include reading, writing, grammar, vocabulary, to where right now, all of their resources are separate. So our kindergarten and third, fourth, and fifth grade will be, um, implementing Magnetic Reading, which focuses on, so kindergarten's foundation, so phonics, phonetic awareness, third, fourth, and fifth grade, Magnetic has the vocabulary and comprehension. And then first and second grade will be using Ready Reading, which, um, is the foundational skills that builds upon the foundations, but they're not quite ready for that vocab and comprehension yet. So we are waiting for the all-encompass, the all-inclusive program that will be coming out next year. So again, this is the same thing that was implemented this year, we saw tremendous growth with it, so something's working.
Any questions? If not, I need a motion. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have our secondary English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption.
Yes, so, and actually, um, Mrs. Twombly graciously came in, if you had any questions about this, um, resource. So Common Lit, we are recommending it for our sixth through twelfth grade ELA curriculum. So teachers sixth through twelfth grade have spent the semester piloting the resource with full implementation from program representatives. So after getting the first diagnostic, our PDC, so our Regional Professional Development System Center came in and went over data with our secondary teachers, ELA. Um, and through conversations, I noticed many of them mentioning, well, I use Common Lit to teach this lesson, I use Common Lit, oh, have you heard of Common Lit? So after more research on my part and talking with some of the teachers that were, was using it, realized it's not necessarily just a supplemental resource, but it is a all-encompass curriculum. Um, so again, after looking at pacing guides, curriculum units across the board, we were a little inconsistent. So again, that's why we started looking into a common ELA resource for secondary level. So, um, Common Lit three sixty has lessons for each grade level, novel units included, there are grammar vocabulary units included. So the three sixty includes the Pro Plus, which is, there's professional learning platforms on there, assessments, data, um, it, it, it houses everything. So our pilot, we did get access with, with all of these paid features, and we got pretty good feedback from teachers. Again, it aligns six through eight, um, something that we found was, this is just very, for example, a sixth-grade teacher taught this unit using this book, and then by the time they got to tenth grade, that teacher was using the same book for something else. So kids were like, I've already read this book, I've already learned this, so we don't want that, we wanna make sure that we're teaching the right standards and the right grade level. So, um, this is a, we are recommending a three-year contract for Common Lit for our secondary ELA curriculum.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our twenty-five, twenty-six district assessment plan.
Yes, so, um, this is our district assessment plan, the only thing that is updated from last year is our calendar windows. Windows are very similar to what they were last year. We did map testing, um, mid-April with iReady testing following, so that was a change this year. Seemed to go very well, um, with kind of the windows we had between the tests, I think was a big thing. So we are asking to approve the assessment.
Do you, do we change that schedule after we got our map results back last year?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that we may adjust that based on our results again this year, or do you?
So I'm still waiting for, I thought I would have map test results back by now.
Right.
Um, but they're not, Desi. Um, so yes, we'll still, we'll definitely look to see how we did score with how the change went this year, so if it was a total flop, definitely we will adjust as needed.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, and so, I mean, and if we miss any school days or anything next year, the dates will be adjusted to maximize, um, the instruction time.
Should we miss? Thank you.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Just matter how page.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got an extension for my computer's going down. Next up, we have the Building Student Parent Handbook.
Yeah, this was, I'm sorry, yeah, this was, uh, presented as a first reading in May. The only change that we made since then aligns with Senate Bill sixty-eight, which is signed, um, defines electric, electronic devices not being allowed to be used during the school day. No other changes were made.
And the way I understand it, so they could still have them in their backpack, they just wouldn't be able to physically use them.
They could not display them, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Turn off at the start of school, and then they could turn on when they're out.
Robbie, what do you think of this?
I'm excited for it.
I think it's a good day, I think it's gonna be hard to, at the beginning, I mean.
It will be, to once, once we get staff on board, and being the example also, I think that'll help, and so, I'm excited for it.
I personally don't think getting them on board is gonna be an issue, I think getting everybody handling it the same way is gonna be the issue.
Correct. You're exactly right.
But if there's an emergency, any parents more than welcome to call in school anytime.
Correct.
And, and admin's gonna be like, yeah, we'll get your kid or whatever, just like if the kid has an emergency, they have access to a phone here, they can call their parents immediately.
I think the one question that my teacher has had was field trips, I'm not supposed to have them on field trips either. And so, but if they go to a group where half the kids go here, half the kids go here, figure out how to communicate, and so that's probably the biggest question we've had.
What'd you say? Under your breath, got it.
Admin maybe would be out or something.
It will work for you, those things, for sure.
Okay, one other question, if not, we need a motion.
It's over.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Employee Manual.
Yeah, this was, uh, presented for a first reading at the regular May meeting. After discussing with council, the additional column on the salary schedule for the doctoral degree that we've, um, discussed at that meeting, was added in on the salary schedule and as a part of this document, that's why it's not a separate recommendation. It will become part of, uh, what we do here as being part of the man. So that extra column, I believe it's page seventeen, possibly eighteen, of the, uh, document that you have, shows, displays that additional column for the doctoral in there, assigned there. Eighteen, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Not in need of motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the activity salary schedule as presented.
Second.
All in favor? That was Employee Manual, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But you know what, Janet, did you get?
I'd like to amend that. Employee manual, I read the wrong line. Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have Activity Salary Schedule.
Yeah, this was, uh, presented at the May meeting, uh, for board review and discussion. This revision gives some needed increases for our sponsors and coaches, uh, as well as provide annual increases for those positions, if it's approved by the board, or which are recommended.
Any questions?
I don't know, I didn't make a motion yet to approve the Activity Salary Schedule as presented.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, we have our Local Compliance Plan.
Yeah.
Come on down.
It won't be a vagina show, this will be.
So again, we would like to use Desi's recommended plan, and as, as our district, and on page thirty-four, what we selected was for children ages three to five that are not kindergarten age eligible. Um, we're gonna identify all children as eligible using any of the disability categories other than language impairment, but including using young child with developmental delay, which we call YCCD. And then for children with disabilities from ECSC who become kindergarten age eligible, we're going to continue the child as eligible using YCCD, young child with developmental delay, or apply any of the other disability categories, um, if they qualify it as something else. But we want them to go to kindergarten, still YCCD and getting those supports.
Any questions from the surveys? I'll hear that. Okay, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one I sent.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the FY twenty-five budget revision.
Included in your board packet is a budget revision for FY, by fund for FY twenty-five. The requested budget revisions reflect an increase in operating revenues that match current year-to-date amounts, which is an increase by one million nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This brings our FY twenty-five operating revenue budget to twenty-six million four hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This revision brings the FY twenty-five operating expenditures to twenty-six million eight hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The increase in expenses includes grant adjustments and additional staff salaries and benefits that were added to the budget. While we are still at a deficit budget, this budget revision is less of a de- deficit than what the board approved at the previous budget revision. We ask that the board approve the FY twenty-five budget revision as presented.
This would be real similar to what we talked about earlier with, you know, the backend, like.
Just move that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not the other way.
Our original budget was five sixty, this one's about three ninety.
Yeah. Close to zero.
Yes. We make no guarantee.
I don't know, I felt like you did.
That's, that's the way we try to get it.
I make a motion to approve the FY twenty-five budget revision.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, we have the FY twenty-six budget.
The FY twenty-six budget is included in your board packet to review. It includes the budget letter, estimated revenues and expenditures, the revenue and expenditure trends, a detailed breakdown of the current debt service payments, and the historical picture of the last ten years of the district's assessed valuation and tax levy rate history. We ask that the board approve the FY twenty-six budget as presented.
Do we have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the FY twenty-six budget.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Aquari Elementary schematic design.
We have an agreement attached from IDS that would include some of the work we talked about earlier with getting us, getting us off the ground, getting things going between now and April. As you'll see noted in there, it was paying only fifty percent of their fees. And then upon successful ballot measure, then the other, the other portions would be, would move forward from there. This also includes a contract from BHC, which is who would do the traffic study. But that's all part of the IDS proposal as well. Not fee, it's a separate fee we will add in directly, but contracted through IDS.
So their portion of that is included in this, but IDS's portion of that bill, is what you're saying?
They're just doing it as a master. You'll see at the bottom, page five. Is BHC's.
And the 127 is half of the total fee if the measure passes.
If it passes, we have architecture and design.
Right.
Plus, they get a schematic.
Yeah.
I'd ask Cole to look at this, just between us and in the world he's in, he's more attuned to this. He said it was really. Yeah. Yeah, he said it was, this was really typical where this bid would be, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Aquari Elementary schematic design.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, next up, we have change order number one of Midwest Synthetic Turf Professionals.
With the baseball project, we, they discovered a few things upon taking off the old turf. This change order is to replace home plate with, instead of a fake style, the new, new fake style home plate they can adjust. It includes the purchase of hitting mats for the batting cage, as well as they will use them on the field for practice to save those areas of turf. It includes the leveling, laser grading of the rock on baseball, so it was wavy, I'll call it, underneath parts of, parts of the turf. They included the laser grading and the rock. And it includes the, the total of just actually twenty feet of nailer board that needed to replace. It was rotten. And then it includes a deduct because on the original purchase order, we had accounted for about 400 feet of nailer board that needed to replace. So that was in a PO, so that's shown as a deduct. We hadn't paid anything, but that, that 14,000 amount was subtracted, so for a net change of adding $15,018.
Didn't they on the original bid have a line for a light regrade? Was it just that bad? Is this a bump beyond?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, when they strung it, and we were out there, we ran a string from home to second. There's parts of it were touched and parts of it, you could put your whole hand under the string, so. Which then, you know, that low spot creates old wall, so the turf goes back quicker in those spots.
Okay. Any other questions?
Make a motion we approve change order number one of Midwest Synthetic Turf Professionals.
All in favor? Thank you. Next up, we have the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six breakfast and lunch prices.
Every year, Desi provides what they call the paid lunch equity tool that we use. We put in numbers and calculate. It calculates for us what's required to be charged. This year, because we have a positive balance in our food service account, we're exempt from using that. So we're not required to raise prices. So the recommendation is to not raise prices. Now they will remain the same for breakfast and lunch as the current year because we were exempt from that tool this year.
Is there ever an instance where, not that staying the same is not good, because that's awesome that we're doing that, but is there ever an instance that it goes down, pricing does, if you have too much of a surplus?
No, so if you have too much of a surplus, you are required to spend it down. Because with COVID and some of that, those monies, our surplus got larger than normal. But you make, we've made like bought new refrigerators, rooftop units and flooring in the kitchen. So you make those capital improvements with that budget. You are required to do that. You can't just keep pulling the balance in the, in the service.
Okay.
We make that motion to not increase prices. I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, next up, we have the vocational grant.
Yeah, this application that's in your packet is submitted for approval to be submitted to Desi. The deadline for the submission is July 1st, which is why we're doing it right now. It is a 50-50 match grant, so if approved by Desi, the district would make these purchases and submit for 50% reimbursement. I have asked staff from the high school, because we're talking about computers and some, some stuff for the VoIP programming, I've asked them to be present to answer any questions about these things. If there are any other recommend.
Yeah, do we have any questions?
I don't know if this is, I was curious if there was an update on the Patterson Family Foundation grant that we applied for.
We're still in process. I haven't gotten.
We're in.
An approval denial yet.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I make a motion for the vocational grant.
All in favor? Okay, next up, we have out-of-state student travel request.
I have two requests this month, both from the DECA organization, December 8th through 13th for the New York City trip. Their comprehensive marketing experience. And then April 24th through the 29th is the ICDC in Atlanta.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, it is. What happened?
I'm an easy target.
At this point, I need a motion to conduct a closed executive session, including any record of vote to next scheduled meeting pursuant to statutes contained in Chapter sixteen, point 02, when our assembly. Full call. An aye. And now I need a motion to adjourn.